Cosidas. Cosidas absent. Rita?
Here.
Rita here. Donahue?
Here.
Donahue here. Holly?
Here.
Holly here. Fernwald?
Here.
Fernwald here. Hill?
Here.
Hill here. Mack?
Here.
Mack here. Carr?
Here.
Carr here. Cantello Zelman?
Here.
Cantello Zelman here. Slattery? Slattery absent. Klinker?
Here.
Klinker here. Johnson? Johnson absent. Alexander?
Here.
Alexander here. Bellato?
Here.
Bellato here. Eleven present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next we go on to what's a public hearing pursuant to the bond issues, the notification act on the proposal to sell limited bonds in an amount not to exceed 1,550,000 for the purpose of paying judgments, claims and settlements for various litigation cases. Again, the city council will hold a public hearing on August 27th, 2019 at 7:00 PM, again here at the East Annex located at 2434 Vermont Street, Blue Island, Illinois, 60406. Again, the purpose of the hearing will be to receive comments on the proposal to sell limited bonds in the amount not to exceed 1,550,000, again for the purpose of paying judgments, claims and settlements from various litigation cases. Any comment? None from the public? Any from the Alderman?
I need a motion to close the hearing.
All of our car go ahead.
I'm just wondering, has Dave Meyer looked at this and determined what long-term effect this is going to have?
I think they have reviewed it. I don't know how much in detail, but he's coming back on Monday.
Tuesday.
I know he'll be back in the office on Monday. We had somebody in our office today, but I don't know whether or not to review this particular item. I can ask.
Okay.
It's been reviewed and discussed about the different ways that it would come across to the council and to the finances, but I don't know the particulars though.
So just to clarify then, this is still going to go through a committee? Is that how that works in terms of reviewing the just, or does it just come back city council for a vote?
Probably would have to come back.
I mean, just, but there's not going to go through council committees?
Still has to go through.
Okay, all right. So this is, I see. Okay, gotcha.
This is just, this is just a process to start.
Got it. Thank you.
So I need a motion.
To close the hearing.
To close the hearing. Motion, Alderman, Holly, Secamell, Rita. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mack?
Aye.
Mack, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman?
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to number five. Presentation of general proceedings. They need a motion to approve the city council minutes with the date of August 13th, 2019. Do you have a motion by Alderman Cantello Zelman? Do we have a second? By Alderman Klinker? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
I'm an abstain.
Donahue abstain. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Abstain.
Fernwald abstain. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mack?
Aye.
Mack, aye. Carr?
Abstain.
Carr abstain. Cantello Zelman?
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eight ayes and three abstentions, Your Honor.
Thank you. We now open up the public comment.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Marco Perez. My address is to be determined by circumstances that I have lost control of in a situation that, again, I have lost control of. I come here before I leave this town to remind you people that I was an outsider here. I came here after my mother died. This town took me in as family, something you people have forgotten. Have any of you ever taken a walk in this town in the late afternoon and listened to this town breathe, to live, to hear it? This is a living entity and all you people think about is a power play within and among yourselves. When does it stop? And you go out there and see it as a living thing. You've forgotten that. Most of you have lived here all your lives. I'm an outsider. I can feel it. I can sense it. But you've, people have forgotten it. The people who proclaim their love for this town. A person who proclaims their love for their town is a passion, but a passion without compassion is useless. I'm a product of a Mexican father and a Japanese mother. I was baptized a Catholic, but I'm a Shinto Buddhist. And in Buddhism, you learn how to listen. You learn how to feel. You open your senses to what is around you. And most of you have forgotten how to do that. You live in this town all your lives, but you've forgotten what this town is. It's home. It's a life entity. And all you think about is, oh, Metro South is going to close. Oh, how are you going to pay this? Oh, how are you going to pay that? Go into your neighborhoods. Walk. Listen to the trees. Feel it. It'll tell you what it is. You don't have to worry about everything else because this town's been here for a long, long time and it's gotten past a lot of adversarial situations. And it'll get past this one too. Think about the people who live here. Think about the town as a living thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Vargas, I'm terribly sorry. I missed the earlier portion. Mayor Vargas, I'm terribly sorry. I missed the earlier portion for the bond issue. May I still speak? Will you tolerate me?
Just for a little.
Thank you. I'm very concerned about the bonds and the $3 million that these various lawsuits have cost the city of Blue Island, specifically with the lawsuits related to the Robbie Silva cases. Lawsuits related to Robbie Silva should be paid for by those who are responsible, specifically the bad actors, individuals in the Blue Island Police Department, elected officials who permitted this to happen, and those who obstructed justice for nearly two decades. Had the Blue Island Police Department investigation been properly completed, Blue Island would not have had to spend nearly $3 million on these lawsuits, specifically the million that went to Ms. Thomas, the million that's going to go, million 1.2 that's going to go to Officer Harrow and the funds that went to attorney fees, just to be clear. That's how I reached that point. When will Blue Island Aldermen demand those responsible be prosecuted? There is no good reason why Blue Island taxpayers should be paying for any of this. Those responsible can, should, and must be held responsible and accountable. The Silva case is similar to the Kochman case. Special prosecutor Dan Webb from the Kochman case, Smollett case, and the Graylord trials should be appointed special prosecutor to follow the evidence wherever it leads. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I'll move on to report of city officials' presentation of resolutions regarding mayor's announcements. It's been a busy two weeks here in the city of Blue Island. Good news and bad news. One of the bad news that you probably saw it on the, both on the radio, heard about it on the radio and in the media about Rene Padilla, the gentleman who dove in to save his daughter. We're trying to get more information whether or not the services are here or what the process, what status is on that. Again, that was a loss for our community regarding Mr. Padilla and Padilla family. Briefly, very briefly, negotiations or talks continue regarding Metro South. We will be going into executive session to discuss possibly another option. There are, and I won't mention names, two options that are on the table that are negotiating or still people trying to assist not only the city to bring the parties together regarding that. But we were going to bring something before the council this evening regarding option number three. On September the 14th, well, let me repeat this. I think on September the 5th, the union that represents a lot of the workers there are going to have a rally in front of the hospital. All are welcome to join, and I'll get you more information, the time and location. The city is requesting on September the 14th that we all come out in numbers for a rally at 11:00 AM on York and Gregory. We've invited elected officials. We are inviting you as elected officials, the residents of Blue Island, employees of Metro South, to save not Metro South, but to save our community hospital. As I've mentioned before, there's other options for that hospital, but we want, we'll continue fighting for what we think is necessary for this community and the surrounding suburbs. That's all I have for right now for mayor's announcements. My next point is appointment to the library board of Steven Esparsa. Mr. Esparsa lives in our community, is a family man, lives on the west side of Blue Island. He works at First Smith West in the bank as a loan person. So I'm asking the approval, the consent of the council for that. I need a motion and I need a second. He's taking the place of Leo Castillo, who was on the library board, who sent in his letter of resignation due to employment and personal issues. So I need a motion for Mr. Steven Esparsa. Motion by Alderman Cantello Zelman. Do we have a second? By Alderman Fernwald. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mack?
Aye.
Mack, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman?
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker?
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a presentation. And I'm going to have a young lady come up and from the Forest Preserve of Cook County, let her introduce herself and the reason why she's here.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Vargas, and members of the city council and Representative Burke. Nice to see you all. I'm Chris Slattery. I'm the director of planning and development for the forest preserves. And if you're looking for a place to go walk in the trees, I'm here to tell you how you can do that. And so I've been with the forest preserves for eight years now, and, you know, we discovered that a lot of people are still confused about how the forest preserves are different than city parks and how they can get involved with the forest preserves. So I'm just here to give you a quick 10-minute kind of forest preserve 101, some highlights and some improvements that are in your area, and just a quick pitch for how you can get more involved. So I don't know if you can all see there. I have to actually advance this myself because my remote is working. So forest preserves, as you can imagine, are home to a lot of sensitive and important natural resources that range from woodlands, savannas, wetlands, and prairies. But many people don't know that Cook County is one of the most biologically diverse. We have 23 really important Illinois nature preserves and have 25% of the state's biodiversity and, you know, one of the state's most populous counties. So, but, you know, conservation is our main mission. We also have a lot of recreational opportunities to offer Cook County residents that range from camping. We have five campgrounds now not far from here, Camp Sullivan and Camp Chabona over in South Island. We have 300 miles of trails, 150 miles of paved trails, and another 200 miles of unpaved trails. We have three aquatic centers, over 200 picnic shelters. We have lots of canoe launches now and paddling opportunities, lots of programs. I brought you maps and programs that come out quarterly, and you can always look for announcements on our webpage. Many people don't know that the Portfield Zoo and the Chicago Botanic Gardens are part of the forest preserve system, so they actually are dependents on our land, if you will. They pay for all of their own improvements and activities, but they're important partners for us. We are increasingly doing programs together with them and trying to support each other. So many people too are curious about what's involved in habitat restoration. So I think that nature is something you just leave alone. It actually is something that after decades and centuries of settlement and degradation from storm water and other kinds of pollution, it really does need management. So here's just an example from a prairie adult, just to kind of, this truly is a before and after picture of kind of what the difference it makes when a site is actively managed. And we have people out, you know, every weekend working in the forest preserves. So, and then there are important species that you may or may not be familiar with, but bald eagles certainly are something you can actually go see over on the river in Riverdale at Whistler Woods. You can see them there pretty frequently, and blending turtles, and black-crowned night herons, and of course, river otters are the most popular animal. But of course, health benefits getting out in nature. So there's increasing studies about just the benefits of being outside. Outdoors in nature reduces asthma, blood pressure, diabetes. And then, of course, it also serves a flood protection role. So think, think about how much more flooding than we're seeing people's face because without 70,000 acres, the whole hell of storm water. So we also did a little economic impact study. So if you had to replace the forest preserves, that serve a function of cleaning water, holding storm water, you know, the estimated value of all of that is a pretty big number. So these are the types of benefits that the economic impact firm tried to measure. So flood prevention is really the biggest one. And for all of those benefits, on your tax bill, you see lots of line items, but the forest preserve is the little sliver in green. So the 1%, you know, of your tax bill that goes towards supporting 70,000 acres, the largest amount of, we're the second largest landowner in Cook County in comparison to the arches. So I wanted to just now get a couple of highlights of things that are going on in your area that you should be aware of. So of course, the Calseig Trail, wear my Calseig Trail shirt. Any of you aware that the part that starts from Cicero going west, that 12 and a half miles has been open since 2015? And Freedom Park is where it sort of ends. This stretch right here, the forest preserve just opened with Blue Island. So that's east of Ashland. So this is Ashland. So right at Face Point there where the tall senior buildings are, you can get on the trail now, and you can go over the river. It's a lovely bridge. And you can go on the north side of Joe Louis, and there are lots of big oak trees, beautiful one-mile stretch of trail. And then you hit Halsted Street, and you can go down Halsted Street, across the street to Whistler Woods. I wanted to point, I'm sorry, there, there's Whistler Woods, where the P is. Okay, so I'll show you a picture of it in a minute, but there's a beautiful mural here. And you can go all the way up seven and a half miles to Dan Ryan Woods where the Major Taylor Trail ends, and you can enjoy some of the new improvements there. So the missing segments of trail, by the way, are all scheduled. As you know, I think Blue Island has got some missing links that are scheduled to be awarded. IDOT is the agency that will be awarding contracts for the remaining segments, but November is what we're hearing. And we appreciate everybody kind of keeping the pressure on IDOT to make sure that that happens because I think we're all hearing that, you know, the slowdown is really with that agency and keeping these contracts moving. So we're hoping by next summer there will be a completed 26-mile trail system, and we will all be able to travel. I live up in the Beverly neighborhood, and, you know, that we will be able to travel on bikes and get down the Major Taylor Trail and then over, you know, some beautiful stretch of trail. Or if you're really adventurous and want to go all the way to the Burnham Greenway and go east to Indiana, this is our Sandbridge Nature Center, and we have a aquatic center there and a campground there. But, I mean, there are all kinds of new opportunities that will open up when the full trail system is open. So. This is everyone's worst nightmare, right? All right. Does anyone have any, any skills that want to help me?
Not anybody. Come on. Somebody has to jump in.
Is it a Mac or a PC?
Here we go.
There we go.
All right. Thank you. All right. So this is the stretch of trail that just opened last August. And so the bridge connection, so this is Whistler Woods, this is Joe Louis Golf Course, this is Ashland Avenue, right? So here's the Blue Bridge, the Chadon Street Bridge. So this is the stretch that still needs to be completed in 2020. We hope that will start later this year. But this is really a lovely bridge, and there was just recently a ride coming down the Major Taylor Trail going on Whistler over, down over to the Freedom Park. So this is a picture of the new bridge, and you can see the marina from there, and you can, this is the stretch along Joe Louis Golf Course. So there's some really large trees, really a beautiful stretch of trail. When you hit the other, when you hit Whistler Woods and go just tamponade north of the end of the parking lot of Whistler Woods, there's a wonderful mural that kind of tells the story of Marshal Major Taylor, who was the first African-American world champion in any sport, but whose career ended in 1910. So from 1899 to 19, maybe it was longer than 1910, but around that time period. So, but he actually grew up in the Indianapolis area. He ended up being buried in Glenwood. And, you know, this bridge is along the Major Taylor Trail is a way to interpret and honor his career. So if you wanted to take the Major Taylor Trail further north, all the way to Dan Ryan Woods, seven and a half miles north, you would find some new amenities that were just completed and opened in large part due to a grant from the state. Thank you Representative Burke for state support for open space development amenities there. But this used to be where we had toboggan slides. So this is our own little mini swallow cliff. There are actually three sets of stairs at Dan Ryan Woods. This is the easiest, I would say, and it's got rails and landing, so it's something that anybody can really manage. But there are other stairs that are more like set of cliff that are a little more challenging. And then we also opened a new nature play area. So this looks like a lobster cage. There will be red creeper vines. They grow over it. That give it more of a vegetated fort feel. But, you know, this is our forest preserve playground. Lots of kind of nature-themed elements at this playground. So that just also opened recently. We also have one-mile walking loop at Dan Ryan Woods with motivational signs that tell you that being active in nature can reduce the risk of high blood pressure and diabetes. And lots of people like to do the one-mile loop before they go run the stairs. So we're trying to get more information and wayfinding signs, signs about the history of this place out in our, what we're calling our gateway sites. So Dan Ryan is one of the palest preserves. So at Maple Lake, at the little red schoolhouse, you will find these information panels. And there's also these, you know, message boards where you can see information about programs and other things to do. So we're getting more signs. Many may have seen along signs on La Grange Road or along Western Avenue, some new kind of wayfinding signs to help people know things that are there that they may not know. And out in the palest preserves where you can truly get lost, you can spend a whole day or an hour. You know, we have these now intersection posts that help you see where you are so you can find your way home. So next year, we are embarking on a major repaving project in the Timely Creek Cave System. So this is very close to Blue Island as well. But here at 151st Street and Harlem, this is Arrowhead Lake and Turtle Lake. Oak Lawn is a water consortium. They're replacing a major new, they're putting a major new water line in basically through the forest preserves here. And they will be repaving part of the trail that will be disturbed by that. And we will be using some local bond money to complete repaving of big parts of this trail too. This is one of the oldest trails in our system that is due for replacement. So that'll be starting next year. Okay, so what can you do? How can you get more involved? So we're asking people to just go out and visit the forest move, really take advantage of these opportunities. And you can find new events on our website. We have a fabulous website with an interactive map and a calendar. You know, tell your friends. Tell your elected officials. And then we also are looking for people who can help, help us restore sites and spend time in nature volunteering. It's actually a great exercise too. I spend some of my Saturdays at Whistler Woods, at Dan Ryan Woods, and at Peekaboo Prairie. And, you know, you have to look on the website on the calendar which Saturdays or which sites. But, you know, there's just a few hours on Saturday morning. You really feel like you're making a difference, helping the environment as well as getting some exercise. And there are people there who really know what they're doing to manage the fire. So, and then we also have a forest preserve foundation. If you know anybody who's looking for a place to leave their estate, we welcome, you know, people's contributions to the foundation to help support our work. So that's basically it. I just appreciate the opportunity to tell you about the forest preserves and some things that are going on right in your backyard and really encourage you all to get out and enjoy this.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions? I just want to say personally, I've ridden part of the Calseig Trail from Blue Island heading east through Whistler Woods, heading towards the Dan Ryan. I've gone through where is it, Major, where the mural's at?
Yeah.
And over the new bridge and a little bit towards west of us. And it is, if you haven't or if you haven't, don't have a bike, get one, especially during the fall, the change of the colors, seeing nature at its fullest. As our resident here, Mr. Perez says, get out, listen, and look, and enjoy the surroundings of what this community, this area has to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Next, let me make this announcements. I would like to mention that there will be a public meeting, which will include the community development and judiciary committees covering a possible, I repeat, possible tax amendment regarding adult use cannabis. And that's going to be held on September the 11th, 2019 at 7:00 PM here in the East Annex. Again, I repeat it, on September the 11th, 2019.
Mayor.
At 7:00 PM.
Chairman never agreed to this meeting.
No.
It takes place, they're my regular meeting night.
Okay.
We can schedule a meeting, just a different night. Our agendas have gone three hours at a time.
All right.
So I don't want you to put out the date. It's tentative. It's going to be within the next few weeks, most likely.
Got it.
Most likely not that date, though.
All right.
Right.
The main thing is it's out there that we're going to discuss this, or the council and both committees will start discussing that, that issue. Okay. City clerk's business.
No business.
No business, Your Honor.
Any bits?
One item, Your Honor. We, I need a motion to approve the 2019 Underground Utility Repairs Award Recommendation to Insitiform Technologies in the Amount of $336,518.75.
I need a motion by Alderman Donahue, do you have a second? By Alderman Bellato, any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. City treasurer?
No business, Chairman.
All right. City attorney? All right, we'll move on to committee reports, Committee Development Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go through my minutes first, because like I just said, we have a lot of information, and then I'll go through the ordinances separately. So the Community Development on Wednesday, August 14th at 7:00 PM, Alderman Bellato, Cantello, Meck, Cazares, Alexander and Holly were present. Building Department was present. Public comment, Citizen Alan Stevo commented on the history of building permits. He believes the costs are too high and has become a money-making scheme for the city. And under new business, the Chicago Bungalow Association presented an energy efficiency grant, opportunity program, that has been successfully implemented throughout the Chicago suburbs. They provide for free energy audits and insulation installation for homeowners that meet the criteria. However, the only caveat is that there must be no cost for permit fees. The Building Department will evaluate and return with a recommendation for the next committee meeting. They've successfully ran this in Posen, Oak Forest, and the park, or, I mean, a bunch of towns around us, and basically they'll come in through ComEd, insulate your attic, but the city, there's nothing, no money, no money in the program to cover permit fees. So the Building Department's going to come back and see if there's a way we can offer this program for our citizens. There was a motion made by Bellato, seconded by Cazares, to approve a parking lot improvements at the Blue Island Medical Clinic at the former Masonic Temple. All ayes, motion carried. There was a motion made by Bellato, seconded by Meck, to have three corners development, replace all of the light poles at the city parking lot to match the vintage ones chosen in the streetscaping design. All ayes, motion carried. There was a motion made by Holly, seconded by Cantello, to refer storm drain issues to engineering for review for the Blue Island Medical Clinic. Motion made by Alexander, seconded by Holly, to approve two banner signs of no more than eight square feet facing Wallon Gregory for the Dr. Anderson Dental Clinic. He must remove the banner on the current city light pole. All ayes, motion carried. There was a discussion in replacing damaged residential light poles with decorative light poles as instances occur. Chairman Bellato will discuss with Jim Polster from Public Works on cost estimates and will return to the committee with more information. There was discussion on various types of building permits, business licenses displayed in homes and businesses. Currently permits and licenses are just black and white printed copies out of a copy machine. The old building permits that we're used to seeing no longer exist. In the past, they would put a building permit, who the contractor was, a building permit number. We haven't done that in a few years for cost savings. Also for electrical plumbing, we haven't issued those permits. They're easily identifiable on the window. Same goes with business licenses, there's no identifiable license that a business can hang up in a business. So the Community Development Committee is working with Clerk Randy Hauser to figure out ways to improve this and possibly put something in the appropriations for next year. There was a motion made by Holly, seconded by Meck, to sell the abandoned property located at 12751 South Lincoln Avenue. All ayes, motion carried. There was a motion made by Cazares, seconded by Cantello, to approve the lowest bid of $9,800 to remove the canopy and signage at the abandoned Sitco Gas Station located at 12548 Western Avenue. Funds will be used from Business District. All ayes, motion carried. Hopefully that starts really soon. Mark Miller gave an update on several special projects, including the Bios Farm. The committee agreed to move forward with excluding the existing parcel from our MWRD lease and leasing it back to the city to Bios Farm at a possible cost of $5,000. We'd have to look into appropriations for next year, but this seemed to be the most feasible route rather than relocating them to a different location, because cost estimates to the several locations we offered were exceeding $80,000 just to ready the land for planting. So we're going to look into putting this into the budget for next year. Mark Miller returned to the committee with further details as they become available. Mark Miller also gave a report on the possibility of soccer fields, MWRD property, community gardens, and also the Libby Building. The committee will also fully fund the abandoned property program, hopefully in the appropriations for next year, so we can continue removing properties that have been boarded up and vacant for many years and off the tax rolls, hopefully putting them back on the tax rolls or tearing them down and getting rid of the vacant lots, the eyesores that they are, hopefully we can get rid of them. Motion made by Bellato, seconded by Cazares, to send an ordinance regarding the Blue Island Medical Clinic located at 12800 South Western Avenue for a shared use parking lot. That'll be on tonight's agenda. Motion made by Bellato, seconded by Holly, to send an ordinance regarding George and Chetana Miller located at 2201 Vermont Street for a special use for tavern or bar. That'll be on the agenda also tonight. Motion made by Alexander, seconded by Meck, to send an ordinance regarding Arthur J. Weir located at 2029 Broadway for a solid fence variance, basically is replacing a chain link fence with a solid fence. Motion made by Holly, seconded by Meck, to approve all three facade grant applications put forth by Thomas Pett, owner of Tower Car Wash, Tower Car Wash Self-Serve in Tommy's Place for dumpster enclosures. Fully funded, fully applies for the facade grant improvement program, so those all ayes, motion carried. They're also on the agenda tonight. There was discussion concerning the 2017 grant application of Value Express Auto Repair. The committee agreed with, and agreed with the Building Department to deny the application. Motion made by Bellato, seconded by Alexander, to approve the facade grant application for the State Farm located at 12301 Western Avenue, pending incomplete documents. They basically need a letter from the Park District saying it's okay to put the dumpster enclosure on Park District property. All ayes, motion carried. The committee will review a draft of RFP document drafted by Howard Kapari concerning the parking lot and focal points, landscaping and maintenance proposals to be voted on at our next meeting. This is basically a step forward in the Business District of improving and replacing and beautifying our parking lots and focal points along Western Avenue. The Building Department will meet with Fire Museum Committee on August 23rd and then, I believe they did meet for several hours, we'll have a few, a big report at the next meeting concerning the Fire Museum right here on Vermont Street across the street. The Building Department is working on a few sign code inconsistencies and will update the committee as they come forward over the next few months. Motion was made by Cantello, seconded by Meck, to approve and send a finance committee the parking study in the amount of $8,600 from the Business District Fund. This is going to be on the next finance committee meeting agenda, it wasn't on last night's. The first walk and talk the committee had with business owners was a success and four of these applications was a result of that walk and talk, so it's been successful, we're going to try to do another one in September. Motion made by Bellato, seconded by Alexander, to send an attorney to review council approval for the multi-family to single-family permit fee reduction incentive program. All ayes, motion carried. Attorney Horvath and Burke will present that. I have it under my agenda, we'll talk about that in a second. Basically, it's an incentive to lower multi-families to single families by waiving permit fees with inspections and a few other things the property owner has to comply with, but this overall will alleviate the situation where a single-family home at one time that has three or four units in it now, if the ownership changes must, and if they refer it to single-family, return it to single-family, it's an incentive, we can't make them do it, but it's an incentive to lower it to single-family, we'll waive permit fees. We've done this in a few instances, but we want to make this policy, so we drafted it into an ordinance. That being said, if a property's vacant for more than six months, I believe we're doing it anyway. We're telling people that they have to return a multi-family to single-family, but this is, is concerning the ones that are not vacant. So if you have a two flat or three flat and you're thinking of making a single-family home, it's a perfect opportunity to save a few thousand dollars in permit fees by taking advantage of this program. Committee discussed Christmas decorations and the need to fully include 119th Street to 135th Old Western this year. Me and Alderman Holly are working on this, hopefully we'll have some results at the next committee meeting, but our plan is to fully decorate all the way from 119th to 135th Street. The committee repeated its concern for an accurate count in the census 2020. Marisol was from the mayor's office in attendance and we have a pending meeting scheduled. We worked with the mayor's office and we'll come back to community development and hopefully move forward with the plan. Motion made by Bellato, seconded by Alexander, to approve the Blue Island Beer Company signed facade grant application, pending the incomplete documents still needed. Basically, the committee's main job is to approve if he liked the idea, the scope of the project. He's asking for a new sign on his building, we agree that the sign looks great, all the other stuff is matters the Building Department can do, so we did a tentative approval based on, he's got to get all those financials and stuff into the Building Department. Howard Kapari and Brian Pulis gave a Building Department report and Sarah Brown and Kevin Brown gave a marketing report. There being no additional business, we ended at 9:45. So that was my minutes. So going back to the agenda, we have the abandoned property sale proposal under number one here, 12751 South Lincoln Avenue. In your packets was Mark Miller's rationale. I need a motion to, I need a motion, a motion to do this? I make a motion, you make a motion, I need a second. Sell this property.
Donahue, any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right, next one I have is ordinance number 2019-039, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a parking variance for a shared use parking lot in Blue Island, Illinois. This is the one I spoke of with the Blue Island Medical Clinic, the old Masonic Temple building. It's approving the variance, allowing them to have the use of their parking lot. It's been through many committees and this council before, so this is just the final step. So I need, I'll make a motion.
Motion, do you have a second? By Alderman Cantello Zelman, any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next one I have is ordinance number 2019-040, an ordinance authorizing a special use for a tavern or bar, use with a parking variance in Blue Island, Illinois. So this one, the committee did, did not take a vote, we decided to send it to full council for a vote. My personal feelings with this is I'm, I'm going to vote against it because it's my ward, it's my community, it doesn't want to open up a bar in that location again. I'm just speaking as the alderman of that ward, I want to make it very clear. It's a former bar that's been abandoned for 20 years, it's actually, it's a bar that was built into a single-family home. The community, there's no off-street parking, the community's gotten used to it not being there and not being a tavern and bar, so I've been, I've been heard very loud and clear my community's position on this, so I'm going to vote against it, but I wanted to get it out of my committee to send it to full council, because my views just from my ward shouldn't change the views for the entire council. So I'm putting it forward for a vote, but I will not be voting for it.
Do we have a motion second? Mr. Clerk?
I have a motion, I have a second.
Do we have a second, Alderman Cantello Zelman? Any questions? Go ahead.
Alderman Bellato?
Yeah.
Yeah, I certainly respect your concerns and your own ward, so I'm inclined to, you know, agree to it. Just, I'm not that familiar with the background of how this, how they came to want to have a bar there, do you know any background? Okay.
I just, the word is brought to my committee. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Bellato, as the third ward alderman's right on the border of the second and third ward, and I've heard from numerous residents on my side of the border that they're against this, they like the quiet, they don't want the additional traffic. And I would like to know on the Plan Commission, Chair Mark Protaska, who does live in the third ward, was the, was the only no vote for the same reasons that I believe myself and Alderman Rita, the parking, the noise, and they're concerned about the litter and the safety, so I encourage a no vote from the rest of the council. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
No.
Holly, no. Farrenwald.
No.
Farrenwald, no. Hill.
No.
Hill, no. Meck.
No.
Meck, no. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Cantello Zelman.
No.
Cantello Zelman, no. Clinker. Clinker, no. Alexander.
No.
Alexander, no. Bellato.
No.
Bellato, no. No ayes and eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next.
All right, ordinance number 2019-041, an ordinance authorizing a fence variance within the front yard in a corner property. This is the fence I was talking about. It's actually a corner house, and we've come across this a lot as Alderman Holly put the test to. It's a corner house, the fence is actually on the side of the house, it's a current chain link fence, and we have to go through the process of going through zoning and committee and city council. And I'm in favor of it because it's an improvement to the property, it's not the front of the house, it's the side of the house, so I'll make a motion for that.
Motion, do you have a second? Alderman Rita, any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right, one more. Ordinance 2019-042, this is the one concerning the multi to single family. So basically, if you currently have a two unit, or three unit, or four unit, or six unit, and you want to convert it to a single-family home, we'll waive fees, there is some contingencies involved in this ordinance, like they have to make a deed restriction and certain things the Building Department and Attorney Horvath has put into this thing. We've done it in a few cases, and I think it's a good program, alleviates police fire, All right, one more. Ordinance 2019-042, this is the one concerning the multi to single family. So basically, if you currently have a two unit, or three unit, or four unit, or six unit, and you want to convert it to a single-family home, we'll waive fees. There is some contingencies involved in this ordinance, like they have to make a deed restriction and certain things the billing department and Attorney Horvath has put into this thing. We've done it in a few cases, and I think it's a good program. It alleviates police fire, the amount of congestion, parking. It's nothing but benefits. The home is still there when asking it to be torn down, so I'll make a motion to approve this.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Cantello Zelman, any questions?
Alderman, I just have a suggestion, maybe on top of this at some point down the line. I recently had to repair the curb, the city curb in front of my house, which I did at my own expense, and I bought a city permit. It occurred to me that in the future, maybe it would be worth also considering if any resident wants to make an improvement to city property, that perhaps the, you know, fees should be waived for that, something to think about.
You're reading my mind, Alderman Farrenwald. I've talked about this issue with sidewalk carriage walks. Actually, I was just in a conversation with Alderman Meck about carriage walks. It's concerning all of us. I'm sure you got a phone call.
Right, yeah.
So yes, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Do you have a motion, you have a second? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, a motion for approval of payroll for August 9th, 2019 for $334,515.79.
Do we have a motion by Alderman? Donahue, seconded by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, a motion for approval of payroll for August 9th, 2019 for $334,515.79.
Do we have a motion by Alderman? Donahue, seconded by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, we have a property demolition proposal for 12548 South Western Avenue, the former Sitco property. The quote or the bid was for $9,800 by the Decker Brothers. There was one other quote received, I believe Fred was at $13,000. Something around there. Do you remember what he was saying? It was $13,000, yeah. So the Finance Committee last night approved the $9,800 quote from the Decker Brothers, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second by Alderman? Farrenwald, any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
That's it, Your Honor. Our next meeting is Monday, September 9th at 6:00 PM here in the East Danex. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee?
There's no report. The next meeting is September 17th.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee?
So we had our meeting on August 20th at 7:00 PM, and I will have my minutes at the next council meeting, and we have a few motions that passed through. So motion to deny property damage claims. The first one is 2019-12059, which is snowplow damage to sign. So I make a motion to deny the claim.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Holly, any questions?
We can do it all.
Go ahead, we can do it all at once.
Okay. The next one is 2019-1550, tree cracked and fell on car. The next one is 2019-2015, tree branch fell on hood of car. 2019-2057, ambulance on call struck parked car. I'd like to make a motion to deny these claims.
Okay, we've got a motion, seconded by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Also, we have the ordinance number 2019-043, an ordinance amending Title III, Administration of Chapter 30, City Council, General Provisions of the Code of Blue Island, Illinois to establish and record rules for public comment and the recording of public comments. As you know, this went back to committee. There were comments that they wanted longer to speak, so we changed the time to four minutes. That was the change. So I'd like to make a motion.
Do we got a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Donahue, any questions?
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, Mayor. I hope that's enough. We have another long meeting scheduled for the 11th. As of right now, it's a regular meeting on the 11th, and we possibly will meet with the other issue beforehand, but your office will inform.
Yes, thank you very much.[1131.33]